Welcome to the Ottawa City Commission Study Session. Do we have any public comments?
We have none, Commissioner.
All right, thank you. All right, then I'm going to talk to interviews for the city boards. Our first interview is Jim Dean. Jim, you want to come on up? I'm going to have C. State your name for the record.
Your name is James Kenzine.
All right, welcome. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, I am what feels like hours from completing my seventeenth year of the P for Ottawa High School. We are, my wife and I have lived in Ottawa for eleven years. I have relative position, I've grown up as a heavy library user. Having gone in early memory with my mom to the library and being really excited when I got to actually go into the library section and see the public library. I have a background in science, but I also spent some time working for the, in for a public library back in two thousand, two thousand and five. And I'm not exactly sure what else might be relevant to me.
Whatever you feel relevant.
I have leadership experience through both Ottawa Education Association and recently through the Arkansas Department of Commerce Division of the American Association of the and both those, I served as President of our offices. So I, I got experience there. As far as library board experience, my first experience on that side of the table. But I did through our director, director of library board in Florida.
Great, thank you. We have a few questions for you and we'll start with Commissioner Graves.
Can I jump around here in some of the my questions? What role do you see the library serving for the city of Ottawa?
The library is an information hub and a communication hub for a lot of people in the city. It provides low and the the access to their educational attainment materials, but also access to, for some people access to the internet. Maybe access to to, well, through the library to online resources. For the state library resources and what is wonderful for, for me personally is the integration to the most standard libraries. That gives them access to a massive collection that thirty years ago that I've heard of, I think, for a public library. The library also has the position of providing programming for students or for children. Programming for children, programming for adults. And also as a location for public meeting, public discourse. And I think one of the best descriptions I've seen of a public library is not the last place that you can go where you're not expected to spend money today.
Well, speaking of money, as a member of the library board, the library board members are actually responsible for every tax hour that they take in and if they collect from citizens. And so tell me about your approach on budgeting and how you would approach being responsible for every tax hour and then I have a follow up.
Well, on budgeting, I can think of that from a couple of different points of view. My small window point of view as a as a library assistant was that I had a fortunate budget to spend on acquisition of new materials for the nonfiction fiction library section. And that was, that was basically a within certain limits by what the library needs, be very careful in spending the money because it is public funded, we want to make sure that you're being a good steward of public money. And also make sure that you're presenting all the different aspects of the, all the different points of view for different things you're buying, especially for nonfiction materials. I don't have experience on a board managing and being responsible for a large, a large, an awesome buy for, for an organization like the library. Both the organizations that I've been with, but it's not anything. It's, it's off a change compared to something like the library works in. But I think it's our duty to to again, be good stewards, make sure that the people who are making the decisions to spend that money are making it wisely. Not to micromanage a decision, but to make sure that, that, you know, good people make some good decisions are, are primary ones. At the point of purchase, making those purchases.
So my second question. Notes here. Tell me about, are you in support of going to the library concept?
I think shared resources like that, I mean, that would be like a, a, a small version of the local Kansas libraries that's in my mind. The idea that we could we could do more for all of the community libraries, I suppose. With coordinated efforts. Shared resources certainly would, would make it so that each individual library would not be able to spend as much money on their collection if they can access the collection of other libraries. I can't say that I've known that we were pedant or unified libraries until then.
Thank you, Commissioner Clayton. As you said, you're a patron of library. What do you perceive as the biggest need of all of the economy?
I think to a certain extent, and this is from my point of view, looking at, in a lot of my time is spent in science stuff. I mean, my, my position as a science teacher, though, I will browse the science section of any library that I go to just to see what they have to offer. I think that perhaps additional development and reading of the nonfiction to make sure we've got current representation of print materials would probably be would be the first thing I would ask the director. But I can't say that I can think of anything that's been very glaring. I think they're making good use of what we've got as far as the positivity.
Eric Perkins, you want to, by the way, I was a man done. I always wanted to have one, but my left had a detail ability over that, so. I think we had three hairstyles, you know, parted, unparted, departed. Question here is what to, how do you perceive the library, you know, twenty, twenty-five years from now?
Well, the first thing is, from my understanding, it would be a new location. I certainly would, I've been pretty excited to see the architectural drawing of a new library. I don't know exactly where in the process that is. As soon as considerable fundraising, we probably still need to report what, what, uh, would go. I don't think that's I don't think that we're going to see the death of print materials anytime soon. I think that we've heard that from a lot of sources for going along fifty years, that libraries would be entirely digital at some points, and I just, I don't see that happening. I think that's we've had some, some stabs of that and we're providing access to additional materials. Online digital, you know, digital audiobook, that's what they are on. But I think there's something that people enjoy too much about physical book in the hand with paper. Periodicals in hand with paper, research, material, and theology and some. So I think that some of the libraries and if you see today, you're going to have shelves, you're going to have books for all periodic. I think that the shift to computer-owned electronic devices is probably slower in libraries and maybe in some other areas of society because the library does, there are populations that perhaps don't have access to a lot of print technology through the digital system. But I think we probably continue to see libraries serve a, a connection for for finding access to those resources that people need. Even as people have, you know, more and more access to those things on their own devices, even away from the library. The librarians and the library system develop and apply what that, those resources need.
You spoke earlier a little bit about your qualifications and experience, have chosen to fill this position. What do you think it is that the board will sit back and say, man, really quiet that the commission chose Jim Dean to be on the, the board for this reason?
If I had to pick one, I would say the perspective of a teacher in a high school, a teacher in the district. We have close, you know, observational knowledge of a lot of what our, about what our students are looking for. And I know that many of our students are paid them and have been paid them in the library for various reasons, from, you know, being here to get all gears and play games to I think it sounds like all games, but also I remember some students who were very excited about chess, maybe should happen to be a little bit about that. I think that, that that perspective may be the first thing that the other members of the board would be excited to see.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, do you have any other questions? If not, we have one other interview today. I believe at the end of the meeting today, we'll go over, we'll have a discussion. We had one last Monday, so you have three to have a discussion about. And whatever decision we make, we'll have one of the folks reach out to you and tell you how we went. All right, thank you for your time. All right, next one, Stacy Potter. Come on in. Thanks, I was Stacy. State your name for the record.
Stacy Potter.
Good afternoon, Stacy. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Um, I am about a year and a half resident of Ottawa. I've been about a fifteen-year resident of Franklin County and lived here from Wellsville a few years ago. I have a daughter in a middle school. She's finishing up seventh grade. I work from home. I have lots of dogs and my husband is a parent at Wellsville High School. I work for Game Law Technologies. I'm a senior financial manager. So I have a lot of experience in finance and contract management. I also volunteer. I'm the president of the PTO board at the middle school. I work part-time at the Franklin County Social Society. I go in and people are sick on the weekends, gets me out of the house and gets to see everybody. I also do the tours of the cabin on, during summer season at Saturday afternoons. So I want to be very involved and active in my community. So I also love to read. I'm an avid reader. I love to bring the library. I participated in one of the book clubs here, so I'm familiar with a lot of the things that the library does. So it's a little bit known.
Great, thank you. We got just a few questions for you. We'll start with Commissioner Graves.
Why do you want to serve on the library?
As mentioned, I'm an avid reader. I think the library plays a very important role in getting community. Reading this material provided, again, is very important in that it provides important information to a community. Being that unbiased source of information in today's society, that is very important. It's important as well, many of the services that our library provides, such as providing food for the community. Lots of programming for teens and young adults and, and, you know, our older population as well. So the library provides a lot of important programming and services to our community. So I feel that it's important to do that and I would like to be involved in that. Also, I have some pretty important skills I think that would be helpful to the library. I have a finance background. I have a contract management background. I know when I came into building a new library, I've been, you know, assistance in that. Help with some of the budgeting, making sure that as a taxpayer, our, you know, our money being spent adequately and resourcefully. Responsibly and also just making sure that, like I mentioned, that we are representing all of the viewpoints of the Franklin County. So during the summer, it's wild, it's long.
All right, well, you already kind of hit on my question, but I'm going to ask you again, just so you can tell us. And it may be a different, in a different light. As a board member of the Ottawa Library, that board is actually directly responsible for being a good sort of all funds that are collected. And so every single dollar that comes from a taxpayer really, board members are accountable for. And so tell me about your approach on, if you were selected to be on the board, how we would approach utilizing taxpayer dollars?
Sure. So part of my, my responsibility, my current job is to manage money for my company, for my department. And so it's, you own the budget like it's your own money, you spend it like your own. So I think we need to be consistently responsible with, with our dollars, especially my taxpayer dollars. So we need to make sure that we're spending our money responsibly. But we need to like make sure that, you know, especially with the library, we want to make sure the content that is being published is representative of all the viewpoints in the county. Want to make sure that we that, you know, our artifacts are refreshed at an appropriate level, that the level of technology that we offer is, is a is, is at a certain level that's appropriate. As we go to, you know, if we're building a new building, let's make sure that we are competitively bidding all of our contracts that we're putting out. Get three bids, make sure you have anything with, uh, review of those kinds of bids. But I think we have to be physically, physically responsible with our, but we also need to meet the need of our
So then as a follow up question, what are your thoughts on regional libraries? At our own personal library or how do you think that would stand? It would be all put together and they would be.
Oh, like if we consolidate the libraries? I think that as, if, if that were to be consolidated and it were here, that would be good for us as a community. I think that you have to be careful about, about doing it. There's a lot of costing associated with that. But each community, if you're going to consolidate that community, the library is an anchor to each, each, each community, right? And so think about our library who provides food for a lot of our elderly and homeless populations and our students. And I know when I moved from Wellsville and I know that like that community library was just as important to that library, that community. And so their needs are different. So you have to be very careful when you consolidate. There are cost savings associated with that, but each community has its own gates. So you want to make sure that each
As you had mentioned, the application of the act is educational resources. You spoke on all the programming that is offered. What do you see currently as the biggest need for the library?
Um, one of the things I found really interesting in this packet of information that, the information was a little old. It was from twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty. There's a ton of programming, but the number of adult, young adult programs was seven. And there were only forty-one that were attended that wasn't in attendance. That seems a bit of a gap, but then I also got my mailer with all the programming offered this summer. So I don't know if that's just because the information is maybe old. Are, are young adults to be, well, is it well-intended to programming that is going on? That was a little concerning. I have a middle schooler. One thing that I'm her and I have looked into volunteering at the library recently, from last year. And she's not allowed to because she cannot volunteer, so everything is not sustaining. And I was a little, I was a little disappointed because we like to serve and, you know, be involved in our communities. So we are unable to volunteer at the library. So I just want to make sure that if there are opportunities for our, our young people to be involved, that they're given that opportunity. And so that, that is something that I, that may be a gap, but I'm not sure because being not able to it appears we have lots of programming available from our current flyer, but I don't know how well attended this. And maybe that we get picked up through schools. So maybe we don't offer like permanent to young adults at the school offer a lot. So that might be a concern that I see is the young adult, a gap there perhaps.
Mayor Perkins, you know, looking at the future here, what, what do you see the library looking like twenty, twenty-five years inside of now?
Um, I used to really, my application is a little, I filled it out like a year or two ago, so I haven't got a new one. So my view of change is a little, I was very, when I first filled that out, I was very much technology. We should very much be focused on that, but I have a daughter who just finished her first year of college and she just finished at least plus eight. They had a full week where they were completely down on technology. They couldn't get on, the kids couldn't get online. They, so my daughter couldn't write a paper. She didn't know what to do without wifi. So I, I kind of backed away from there. There needs to be a little bit of a balance. So that's a challenge I would have for the library is, yes, we need to have our technology, but we also have to make sure our users and especially our young people know how to manage both, right? Sometimes our wifi doesn't work, our computers aren't working, so we need to be able to pull out our books and our, you know, computer research projects without the internet. You know, they, Wichita Public is literally down a whole week without the internet. And my daughter almost missed turning a final and because she didn't work on it, because she kept thinking the internet would be back up. And so she, you know, and young kids today just don't know how, how to, how to work without it. And so we need to teach those skills, you know, books are still around, we still need those. So in twenty to twenty-five years, I think we're still going to have books around. And maybe we're going to be in a new building, a newer building. And I would like to see more partnership between all of the organizations in the county. I am working at the historical society when we partnered with the library in the holiday season to do like story time hour. When we partner as across the county and the city with the organizations, we all win. And I'd like to see more of those partnerships happen.
Stacy, if there was one recommendation that you could make to the city regarding the library, whether it's a change and improvement or something like that, what would that be?
Um, I would like to see more, I would like to make sure that we are providing relevant content to all of our users. And maybe our young people, if our, if we're putting a lot of programming out there and it's not well attended, why isn't it? You know, as I mentioned, like my own daughter couldn't, you know, figure out how to do a paper without her computer. Are we providing, you know, are we putting out the topics that young people are interested in? Do you have enough, you know, are we making sure that the, the materials we offer are relevant to all of our, all of our patrons? So that would be my challenge.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions there, Stacy?
I would only, she'll return, or Mayor Perkins, you said, do we decimal or do we not? And this is the first time since that.
My daughter and I have proposed by color and it's vast chaos, so we must do it.
Any other questions? Stacy, thank you for your time. Thank you for replying. We have, we've had three applications. We'll have a discussion later on towards the end of this meeting. And if we make a decision, we'll certainly have somebody reach out to you and tell you in a short moment.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, that moves on. I have you placed on a regular commission agenda, which is the minutes from our April twenty-fourth study session or May first study session. And I have two proclamations. One is for Mental Health Month and Kids' Department Day. I believe they were put in front of you. Commissioner.
Correction, I'd say on the item, but it looks to be one of my, Isaac.
Yeah, we'll change it out. We correct it. Thank you. Commissioners, any other things? You'll get a move on those on to our agenda for Wednesday. Okay, thank you. All right, items for presentation and discussion. The first one, mission on accreditation for law enforcement agencies, CLIA, site-based assessment of the chief line guard.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. And I asked that at the regular study session meeting, I mean, have some time to just give you a short PowerPoint presentation for our June site-based assessment. This will be the second reaccreditation for the department under CLIA and our third accreditation cycle since we were first accredited in twenty fifteen. So I'll have, it's similar to the PowerPoint that I gave you four years ago, which is our, already past four years. But it'll cover a little bit of the background, the history of CLIA, how the agency uses that to implement best practices, our policies, procedures. Give you a short update on the schedule that's being finalized as we speak for our assessor who's going to come into Ottawa for three days. Visit people and places and see how it relates to our department function. Thank you, Chief.
All right, I I think still you, stick around.
Ottawa Police Department staff or National Police. A few weeks ago, you should proclamation recognizing this week is National Police Week. And it was time that Wednesday is our regular meeting, so I just wanted to come before you and say a few words about the good things that officers in this community and every, either across our country do each and every week and recognize our fallen staff.
All right, I agree with the review of bids received for lease purchase of the fire engine. Director Landis and Chief Mathias. Good afternoon. What do you got for us?
Yeah, we actually have the new engine set out here for your guys in viewing if you want to. After the mission meeting, but it's been in town for about less than a week. Just not getting stuff put on it. It'll probably be another week or two at the most to get it in service. But we're getting there. Very, in addition to the fleet and the guys are excited, their partners are excited. Get out on the street and look for stuff.
I know that it's part of the gaining funding that we're talking about today, but you want to wrap something else.
Two bids for the purchase financing, one from Midwest and one from Kansas State Bay. They have the same interest rate and so it really just, all things considered, came down to the, on other fees, which one involved a two hundred and fifty dollar closing cost and the other one came with a twenty-five dollar premium discount. So with the, those in mind, it's not the revenue going with, it's a safety.
Well, surprise, one got two bids. Is it in fact only half a hundred six or that?
It just depends. We did receive a third, but it came after the deadline in the mail and so that had to be returned to the bidder. So maybe technically there were three, but one was unopened, no charge.
And razor difference here between the two, so.
Any other questions? Um, this isn't a bond, so this is a lease. And so do we have the ability of, let's hope that rates go down, that when the rates go down and the time that we have, those are, are we able to refinance if there are favorable rates?
That might be a question for Director Landis.
And then we'll find out before this comes before you on Wednesday. We talked about it in a previous meeting. And I'm sorry, I did not ask that question. We were so wrapped up in the interest calculations and what we were seeing, but.
Along the lines, are there any prepayment penalties? If we do decide down the road, if you're deciding to pay this off early, the cash on hand, are there any penalties there?
Then we're noted, but we'll double check that as well.
Commissioners, any other questions? Commissioners, any other questions?
What did it do in quarter mile?
It's governed out at sixty-five. How many miles, how many hours? Uh, but no, we will have a uh fishing ceremony, an open house. It'll probably be. We'll discuss in in the June before July. We were going between two dates, so. Yep, we'll have a chamber coffee down there and go another event.
Commissioner, you okay with moving the uh staff recommendation to the Kansas State Bank on the Wednesday for the uh new car truck? All right, item four is the moderate income housing applications with Director Landis.
All right, so this is um something that you haven't uh, we haven't talked about in a. A couple of months or several months, actually. So I wanted to give just an overview of. The grant application process. So this is moderate income housing, which we call an M I H grant opportunity. From the state and um through KHRC, they um are doing this in quarterly rounds. So. As these application deadlines come out, they are fairly fast moving. And uh our last application, successful application was. In December of twenty-two, and we're still now working through. The process of um contracts and getting that whole project moving. So if that gives you any indication of how many things are moving at one time. Um, so that application um process is really taking a good five months from the time it's awarded. From the time you apply, it's awarded and they get contracts in place and the project can get started. So keep, so we're keeping that in mind as we come through each of these rounds. In the last round, we decided that there was not. A good application ready for or fitting to the M I H criteria. And so the city did not submit an application in the last round. The county did submit an application in the last round. And it was not awarded. So in this um. Round, we're very cognizant of the fact that we've been an award winner once. Um, and well clearly received something uh in this last round, so our county has been successful in the M I H. Um, grant process so far. So keeping that in mind, um. We did send out a um kind of blanket email to older builders and developers in the areas and. And we, this is round two of twenty twenty-three, are you interested in partnering with the city to apply? Um, the city is the applicant, but the partner is the one really um. Providing all the information and putting the helping to put the application together and then getting this shipped off to the state, hopefully being awarded. So in this opportunity, we have M I H ARPA funds and M I H, and those are two separate pots of money at the state level. This is the last round for M I H ARPA. And so this is, those are the bigger projects. They have a little bit different criteria than just a. A traditional M I H grant. So what we've brought to you or what we're going to bring to you hopefully is one in each category. And um, the application deadline is June second. So because of our turnaround time. And no meeting on the twenty-ninth, that really pushes us to bring to you next Monday. Everything that needs to be done in order to apply by June second. Um, there. There are different letters of support that are needed for these projects and one resolution, I believe. And I did. Earlier, I thought there was multiple resolutions, but I think there's just one now, um, one for each project and then the rest is letters of support. We are um. I didn't have those prepared for you yet today. We don't have a total full cost for one of the projects quite yet. We're meeting about that tomorrow morning. And because it was such a fast turnaround, I just didn't want to give you drafts that didn't make any sense. So what we would. Be asking of you next Monday is to review those documents, um review the projects, make sure that you are actually in support of. Promoting those and moving them into that grant application process. Uh, that gives us then two weeks to actually do the full built-out application, which which actually includes a lot of information. It's. It's a whole support of um just the community and the need for residential housing. There there's a whole lot to it. So the two um. We had two applicants for M I H. But we did have uh multiple inquiries, and in fact, there's still two. Voicemails sitting up there waiting for me to call them back about interest, but because it was such a fast-moving round this time. Uh, we've talked internally that for all the other interests, we should start opening this sooner. Than when the state opens their application process, so we can be in the works of getting this done sooner and ready to go for the next round as well. Um, and then we did have the one for M I H ARPA. And I'm gonna cover with you the two, um, the two that we were gonna um, would like to bring in front of you. So for M I H, we have an eleven residential unit and three commercial unit mixed-use development complex. Um, it's three stories, fifteen thousand square feet. It's on Walnut Street between First and Second Streets. And it's about a two point two million dollar investment um in our community. It is uh through Platinum Properties. And will be called Legacy Lofts. And that's just very basic information. Uh, we still have some. We need to work through some numbers as far as how much would be supported by M I H per door, which is very important. In the application process, and if there are any other opportunities for assisting with that project, such as N R P. Um, and typically KHRC is looking for us to have some sort of skin in the game as well. And so that would be something like an R H I D, N R P, if it's in a TIF district, all of those things. And this one in particular is probably more likely to use some sort of an N R P district um or um. Or yet to be determined. So more conversations yet this week on that. The other um project is by Confluence Ventures. It is a combination of seven duplex units at Fairway Vista. And twenty-four um units. It called, it's gonna be called Southern Place. This would be the first two buildings of a full. Um, commercial residential buildout, and this would be apartment complex. So it should, it would be commercial. Fronting K sixty-eight, and this would be built to um, these two units would be to the north of that, so at the corner of Davis and K sixty-eight. Um, this would just be the start to that project at full buildout. Um, there would be multiple. Um, apartment complexes and potential duplexes surrounding that area as well as commercial fronting K sixty-eight. Um, our third application is a great project. It's ten residential units and it's they're duplex type units. Um, three duplexes and one fourplex. But the project is ready to go and. We didn't find that it would be fair to hold up that project in this application process, also not knowing what the true um. The true need for the M I H dollars were, uh, we just wasn't quite ready to push forward. So. Those are the projects that we have to bring to you, and that's a lot of information that I didn't bring you in writing. I wanna give you a full. Um, look at at what those projects look like. We don't have the project cost estimates quite yet for the M I H ARPA. Application. We're actually meeting again tomorrow morning. It's it's in a TIF district, so we wanted to make sure that we knew what the difference um. Impact was between TIF and R H I D. I know that's a lot of um financial talk and a lot of. Uh, just very broad general details, but we wanted to get it in front of you today, just as an update to what's coming. Um, next Monday and see if you would be open to considering those items next Monday, even though I know it's a study session, not a regular meeting. Um, and if you have questions about the process of the projects.
So the difference between the ARPA, M I H and the regular one, and what is there? Is there some kind of parameters that you're limited to or what? What's the difference?
So they are separate pots of money, but two of them are.
Six, uh, there's a maximum on the M I H of six hundred and fifty thousand and then M I H ARPA is. One point two three. So the ARPA is using more COVID money, okay, in addition to what state says. So it's 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 the same parameters, just different scale.
And for the state, different funding sources, so on the ARPA dollars, they have to have that used in the same amount of time that we all do, so. This is their last round for that.
So Director Landis, are you telling us that next Monday is when we'll see all the information on these three projects and you'll need a decision from us?
It would, it would need to be put together by this Thursday or it or wouldn't be coming to you. Um, but then yes, we would need some sort of support by next Monday or um. A special meeting of some sort in order to push any of these forward. It's a very tight turnaround. The timing is terrible.
Is there something that's delaying getting us that information? Like are the, are we allowing the application time to take too long or should they be coming in sooner or?
I have general packets of information, but they're not full um information.
No, 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 no. You guys getting the information. They are, are. Contractors getting the information in too late, and that's why, because I guess what I'm getting at is, I mean, if we only have one day to look at it, I mean, I don't know what kind of. Information you're wanting out of us. I mean, is it just a tier, you know, one, two and three like we did before, or what 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 kind of information are you wanting from us?
Okay, so uh, that's a great question. Thank you. So in the, in the first round, the last time we did this, we could submit multiple projects per type. Of funding source. They changed the rules, um, and you can only submit one project per type of funding source. So we would be asking for your support of each of them individually um in order to push forward and and honestly. Um, now that you said that, we could bring you both of the M I H applications and allow you to choose. I don't have as much information on the second. As I do the first. The first was one that came to us, um, the one that we were looking at. It came to us as an opportunity. In the last round, but wasn't quite right um at that time to submit and didn't quite meet the income eligibility. Criteria. So these are very specific. Um, grants, so these units have to be considered moderate income. Your applicants have to provide. Um, they have to provide income and they have to meet the the eligibility criteria through the state. So it's between sixty and a hundred and fifty percent of the HUD guidelines. Um, at the time for that, this other project, it was. They were uh looking to partner for rental of those units and are no longer looking to do that. So now it does fit this criteria.
Um, so we're we're just seeing the two, we're not really making a decision, because we're seeing an M I H ARPA and just a regular M I H.
Right.
Just showing support.
What you, yes, and there is a resolution in support of both projects individually. And then I believe it's a letter of support. It it's R H I D or TIF and a letter of support for um. Oh, and I'm sorry, there is one other resolution, but you've done this before. It's for the Housing Investor Tax Credits. You saw in this last round. So um. The applicant or any contractor looking to build right now can. Apply for Housing Investor Tax Credits from the state. So. If they are submitting one of these two projects and they want to pair that Housing Investor Tax Credit with it. It requires the city to give them a resolution of support. And in the M I H ARPA application, that is one source of funding for this project. In the other, it's not. And um, so we would have that for you as well. So um. Potentially two letters of support um and resolution, two to three resolution, resolutions. Um, and and like I said, those are pretty standard. I think you saw all of those same templates in the first round, um or between these last two rounds. But certainly, and even if we could get that sent out to you before then, we would do that. The reason I didn't put the whole package together is for the M I H ARPA. It's a really large project, and because of the infrastructure cost to get it started. We did have, we've had conversations internally already with all of the um Development Review Committee and everyone. Tomorrow morning, we're having a. Financing or financial incentive conversation tomorrow morning to talk about the TIF district and what's more beneficial to the project itself.
Uh, you know, I think that um, I appreciate you for, thank you for bringing this to us. And I kind of went through my past emails and. This was a really super quick turnaround. You're absolutely right, and we, nothing really came out about this until mid-April. And so the turnaround is just um. Super quick, uh, because I was looking to see when they sent actually the award letter. The award email came out on the tenth, and then like a week later, they came out with the next one. You're so, you didn't, we haven't really had a chance to. To marinate it in that very long. Um, so, I mean, I, if we don't have time. To process all of that and to make that decision, you know, I'm not opposed to having a special call meeting on the thirty-first or the thirtieth. I'm recognizing that I know the second is the, was the. Um, drop dead name where you have to have it.
Yes, and we would appreciate whatever you can do to. Get it pushed in the right direction. And again, I don't think that. We would be putting anything in front of you if we didn't think that they were valid projects and really good for our community overall.
I guess what I was asking is uh, since we're not really making a decision on either one of these, we're just showing lesser letters of support if we like the projects. Um, my concern was if it was down the road, if there's another, you know, uh, uh, set of applications we're going, it's going, coming out that. If we have multiple projects in one of these categories and we have to make a decision, I would really hate to be, you know, put to the fire with making a decision and. You know, on on, you know, one day. So I didn't know if there was something that that uh. During this process, and as Commissioner Kayler mentioned, you know, that it came out late, but if there's something else that we that could. That could happen to expedite the information that you guys get in order to uh to get it, to get it to us. That's the only, you know, concern I have.
Well, and I'll I'll be honest, I was really far behind in just getting this out, collecting the information and getting it distributed to an internal team. And setting up meetings this fast is, it it's a really tough turnaround. What we should have done instead was. Knowing that this was coming, we should have started putting out, hey, we know that the next round is coming, the application process isn't open yet. But let's start collecting information. If you're interested, start having those meetings ahead of time. And I think we talked as a team that um. That it makes sense to start doing that, even now, as soon as we get through this application, start getting it open and start having those conversations with people that are interested. So that they have more time to develop their application to us as well. And I think we would have a lot more applications ready to go. For you to review, more complete applications ready to be reviewed.
Yeah, the next one is in September, so it's where I'll be working on a calendar.
Yeah, the timeline was brutal for her, especially when, also, um. You know, we want to be able to bring multiple options for you guys to think through. In this case, with timeline, the. Basically, the ones brought forward are the only ones that could probably deliver on that timeline. Uh, there's some pretty interesting projects out there, but they're, they couldn't get their information. There's so much information. Uh, so that's, that's why we're kind of just coming to you with here's two, as much as we'd like to say here's three of their own grade and please. Give us guidance. Uh, the other thing on this M I H ARPA that makes it a little more complicated, she's done a great job. She. Pulled a meeting again of, I think, every department head and six other people. Um, along with the developers and 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 architects and all that. So we had a full meeting on it, but it's complicated because. It's really the kickoff for the case sixty-eight corridor. As far as where the utilities go, who's who's responsible for what, because this is kind of the seat board. And the other thing that's complicating it is we're, it, we met with KDOT two, two weeks ago, maybe three. And started the process so they can do, or we can do a traffic study and start get a formal plan from KDOT. So we've got all these unknowns, so hopefully we'll get a plan set with KDOT, but here's what will happen on sixty-eight corridor coming in from I thirty-five to Maine. So that simplifies a lot of discussion and 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 clarifies costs for everybody, but. You know, you get into the electric and the sewer and and all that. We're trying to think, not just for this project, but long-term, what's the best? Solution for development in corridor. So it, it not only was a very short timeline, it was an extremely complex project. Uh, but I I just probably could want to compliment Melanie, because she's doing six jobs, as you all know. She's done a, she's done a yeoman's job getting this to where it's even.
This north or south on K sixty-eight?
It's the north side. Davis and.
Great, thank you.
I appreciate that input on the the projects overall, and I think that um, when he says we've had some interesting um. I appreciate that input on the, the projects overall, and I think that um, when he says we've had some interesting um. Project ideas, I, I loved hearing from some of these people that were like, hey, have this project. What do you think about this? What do you think about this? And I think that those are really great projects and you're going to see a lot of really great projects coming to you, whether through this application process or not. And I think we really are making some headway on our housing issues. Even though it's not coming, big huge projects at one time, it's coming a few um, units at a time. And I think it's going to start really making a difference. So we really do have some good stuff coming.
Yeah.
And already in process, actually.
That's good news. You can get to the Hall of Fame with singles and doubles.
Yeah, that's true.
And I feel like that is somewhat more sustainable, you know, the, the kind of steady growth is something I think appreciates.
Mr. There's any other questions or comments for Director Landis?
Now, how would you like the move forward? Would you like us all to come back to you on Monday, decide if you want to make a decision then? And then if we need to have a special meeting, we can decide that.
Commissioners, I think that's the way to go.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you.
You ready to move on to C O B? All right, review of our draft twenty twenty-four through the twenty twenty-eight capital improvement program.
All right, so you have uh, quite the packet of material, I know, and a lot of it probably seems like some duplication, but it's, it's um. Therefore, your benefit to be able to see a more expanded view of each of the projects that are brought in front of you. And I think that it's a really good effort by the entire team um, putting this together. So really, this is kicking off our true budget process. Oh, thank you. And um, it is um, put together in a way that we started. We're starting this off with the C I P so that you can see what some of these big projects are that are out here. But we're not asking you to make any decisions. We want you to ask questions. And we want to be able to come back and answer those questions as we talk about each of the funds that would be impacted financially by these projects as we present them to you. So I think that you'll see the flow work out much nicer than maybe it has in the past. Um, and so again, no decisions, it's really just a, we want you to understand the projects and then we'll show you how they financially impact later. So we did, in your packet, you did get a memo, which is just kind of an outline of what the C I P process might look like and. So being brought to you today is all of the detail with some pictures in there and some, some general description. The department heads are available to help answer questions about the projects themselves. And then we will work through all of our budget discussions with you over, through the funds over the next month or so. And then we'll take this um, C I P or the final draft, I guess, at that point, once we've made any changes to the planning commission. Planning commission will review it and make sure that it's in compliance with the comprehensive plan and then hold a public hearing and bring it back to you. Um, for your final consideration of approval, along with the budget, the final uh, adoption of the budget. So with that, um, if you're okay with moving through um, the PowerPoint, we can do that. What I might also mention, you got a couple of reports in here that are summary reports. So you should be able to see a summary by department, but then also a summary by funding source. And again, some of that might change as we go through and we'll make notes as we're moving through the whole process. And again, I do not intend to sit here and talk to you about every single project, but again, the, the departments are here to help with the importance of them. And one other thing I might just add, this um, in the past traditionally has been. A combination of all of the projects that everybody came up with and we thought they might happen in this year or that year. And they had an estimated total with them. This is actually different. You might have seen something in here that's been moved out of the current C I P and moved on to a future project list. And the reason was. If we didn't know that it was going to happen, if we didn't have authority to move ahead with it, if it requires some sort of referendum. Or we have to find some sort of future financing for it, or we really didn't know in what year it was going to happen or where it was going to happen. Because we're still waiting on a study to be completed or any of those things. If we did not know, it went on to a future project list. Not future project list does not mean those things have to happen more than five years from now. It only means that as of today, we knew it doesn't fit into twenty twenty-four and we weren't exactly sure where it was going to fit after that. So we did pull it off and it is on that future projects list. I think that's really important that you know that those things are not super far out in the future. It's just things that we know we didn't have a good estimate for you and we want to be able to make sure it fit when it's in our current financial plan for each of those funding sources. Um, in here, the first three slides are really talking about what's included in the C I P and you all know what that is for the public's benefit. These are projects that don't, we're not, uh, adoption of the C I P does not guarantee its funding. It doesn't guarantee which year it's going to happen in, but it does say that it's relevant and important for us and that we think in this case. In this draft of the C I P, we think that it does have a place in our current financial um, opportunities within each of the funding sources. So if we get started with the airport, um. What, question for you, would you like for me to go through all of the information on each one of them? Would you like me to just introduce it and you ask questions?
What's the timeline on discussing this? I know that there's a timeline with this.
We just, this will be our only discussion on the items in um, today as far as just a general overview of the C I P. But then we'll talk about more how they're financially funded and we talk about each of the future um. Special revenue funds or whatever, whatever that might look like. So the importance today is that you understand the projects and you can give us some feedback. As to whether or not you really want to see this in here and be able to move ahead with it. And if not, we can always, again, talk about those things. Like say, for instance, in this case, when we come back to the airport.
And we can utilize what you're in sessions to either answer questions or provide additional information. And as Melanie said, we, in looking at the document in the past and. We, we opted to go with what the known knowns were and then on the items that were ambiguous or required, say. Um, photo referendums or a significant increase uh, in a mill levy to finance it. We just put it on an out here list, so. Uh, as she said, I will kind of run through the projects. The department heads are here and can answer. Specific questions and this can be the first of several discussions since we can utilize June. And then of course, the planning commission will have to review and approve before it comes to the governing body again in August and September for final approval.
Okay, I, I mean, I see it today as an information gathering and, and. It's, it's information gathering today. I don't know that I'm going to have a ton of questions, but I'm just to grab your, your foundation, try and put the foundation from.
Yeah, okay, that's perfect. So I can give you some basic information and the firm ads can jump in with other information if you don't, if you don't mind. All right, so this one is reconstruction of the taxiway at the airport. This is a ninety-ten grants. Funding through KDOT and uh, tran, is transportation money through KDOT?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And our city airport funds. So the total project cost is estimated at three million. Um, we're anticipating that um, each of the years between twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-six, we would contribute a hundred thousand dollars from the airport fund. To fund this project and this is to rebuild the failing concrete on the existing taxiway.
Like, does pretty closely follow the, the Vinish, is that right? Pronouncing that right?
But it, Vinish recommendations.
All right, I, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, just to clarify, that's items contained in the airport master plan.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else to add to that project? No, sorry, you guys, we didn't practice this.
All right, the next project is the tea hangers and the taxi lanes. This is actually construction of new tea hangers to. Um, accompany the ones that are existing right now and they will be, um, I can't remember if you said it was possibly ten? Potentially ten?
Yes.
New teenagers?
Yeah.
And this would be through an F I A um, grant and the city airport fund as well, also a ninety-ten split. Um, in the year twenty twenty-four.
My guess.
Took this picture because you can see the current new tea hangers.
Yeah.
To the right of that, on the other side of that taxi lane there is where the, where the most, the next side, so they're all right turns.
My guess is it'll be rented before it's completed and we have a waiting list, so that's.
Yes, yes, so their income generate, right?
Yes, yes. Um, and when we, we did put together our airport funds and forecast for you with those things in mind. Also, the cost, um, our cost share and what that means for us as far as um. Transfers from the general fund to be able to support these expenditures in twenty twenty-four um, to twenty twenty-six. Um, also, one item of note is that there, some of this money that is sitting here and available to these two projects. Um, does expire. If we don't use that, it does go away. And so I think that's important as to why we chose to put them in the years that they are presented to you. Anything else on the airport projects? Any questions? The auditorium has one project for you. Um, this is to automate um, the motorized fly loft. Uh, right now, this is. A process that's done behind the scenes at each one of your events or um. At each one of your events are um, the shows that you are there to see, you have staff working behind the scenes. Um, doing this by hand right now. And so in order to improve our safety, the operations and the background noise that you might hear. Um, and to eliminate Tiffany from having to, to hand crank this thing while the show's going on. Um, the proposed um, project is twenty-five thousand dollars. It would be coming from the O M A funds. Um. Do you have any questions about this? Tiffany's here, can you help answer? All right, the cemetery projects. This is an additional cemetery street sign in, um, at Highland Cemetery. Uh, right now, there is, there are actual streets and they do have street names, but there is nothing to indicate those street names right now.
Yes, if you, if you visit an Highland Cemetery, there's fifteen streets out there with, that are named. And there's no market, no marketing out there at all. Never has been. Um. It, it's time, it's well past the time to get these streets named out there and help people. Navigate through that cemetery to find, find their loved ones.
So this is just a, an estimate of what that, uh, uh, conceptual picture of what those street signs could look like, limestone signs. Have questions on this project? Um, and as a side note, this is funded through the general fund as that's where the cemetery is funded from. Um, additionally, a kiosk for the burial site locations. This is in twenty twenty-eight, but we know that this is something that is needed. We have some current um, technology and programs that can help aid in finding. Um, plots within the cemetery, but right now, there's no way to find them if you're at the cemetery um, online and that's a aid in that.
We, we have a program online on our website that you can use, but if you. Don't have access to a smartphone or the internet, when you get out there, there's nothing.
The cremation gardens, I believe that we've talked about this the last couple of years. Um, and this is a memorial garden that's designed for um. The um, housing cremated remains. This is in here as, as a two-year project from twenty-four to twenty-five with an estimated cost of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Anything to add?
Um.
No, and this is just a conceptual drawing that was found as what it could potentially look like, but there is not an actual design yet for the project.
That's correct. We've got no design or no anything else. We've kind of got an idea in the cemetery where we want to put this. But that's all we have to.
I think you'll find we outlined it forty thousand dollars in the first year and a hundred thousand dollars in this year. So the forty thousand would be for design. I, I believe that's the end. Oh, no, I'm sorry. There's one more. The storage building at the cemetery. Um, in twenty twenty-six for a hundred thousand dollars, a pole barn type of building onto house the equipment out there. Anything that?
We've been talking about this for years and. Budgetary reasons have always come out. Um, we began this like, I needed, needed.
Any questions on the cemetery items, projects? Okay, our electric utility. We have two projects in the electric utility. This is a large one. This is the one that we've been talking about. Um, and I believe it's being currently into the design phase right now. Um, and. Do you want to talk about this project? Dennis, you described it so much better than I do.
This was actually designed and in our master plan about fifteen years ago. That's how long it's been on the books. We have done some work, um, some spot work in eliminating some of our uh, forty-one sixty. Uh, biggest evidence of that is downtown on the, the west side of Maine from Seventh Street to First Street. Where that was all converted. We're out of options like that. We don't have options to spot convert just simply because there, there, there are not left. Uh, we're seeing some of the circuits, well, we've seen one completely fail coming out of the power plant. All of these circuits come directly out of the power plant. One of those has failed completely. Uh, we were able to move it on to another circuit. Um, if we have a failure now, there is a very real chance that people will be out of power. Everyone that's on this forty-one sixty. System will be out of power because you kiss simply, we don't have a safe way to work on it anymore. Uh, all the underground, we'd have to kill it in order to, to deal with the underground that's there. The other. Issue that we run into, you'll see in the next slide, uh, is being able to generate to, to these circuits.
Um, I might just mention on this, um, it is, uh, we would anticipate using long-term financing on this project. And it was part of our plan when we brought to you the utility rate structure for the electric fund last year, at the end of last year. So it is something we were already thinking about and planning ahead for when we put that performance together. If questions on this project, it's a, it's a big project.
Then it's on that, when it has useful life is twenty-five years. Is that kind of just an estimation that we'll need to, in twenty-five years, be putting money back into it to continue it?
Well, useful life of most overhead circuits like that is twenty-five years and that's what we give you is a useful life. Most of our circuits are three times.
Three times, yeah.
So. You know, we'll, we'll give you the useful life and you, you hope it lasts.
Yeah.
Three times there.
And there's not like, yeah, it's not that we're doing an option that's only twenty-five years. That's just kind of across the board.
That's across the board. Any, anything that's overhead in a poles. Any, any structures, uh, twenty-five years is what they give you is useful life. Quite honestly, I wish I could tell you that things are being better, made better today than they once were, but that's not necessarily.
No, it's not true. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions on this project? Yeah, okay. The next one is the river crossing, Fisher gets eight through ten, rebuilds.
Rebuild the structures that, that the wire is hanging on going across the river. You've all seen those structures. Well, those structures have been there as long as the forty-one sixty. They're wood structures. Um, they will fail at some point in time. Uh. We believe that to, to rebuild those, at least at this point in time, is, is what makes sense. There's a. Lot of moving parts when we start talking about our electric system and uh. This is the only way that we get generation across to the north side. So if we have any kind of emergency, one way or another. This, these structures right here and this line is the only way that we get our generation across the north side to support that. We have no generation on the north side of town. That is probably the biggest hazard that, that is presented by this. The other side of that is currently we can feed both from our second streets of and from underneath so. We have options.
So I just want to point out here that these are the only two items that are in the actual C I P for the electric utility. But if you look at the future listing, there is probably more than ten others that are listed there. And um, some of them do have costs associated with them that we thought were estimates or fairly close estimates. But we just don't know what years those might happen in. The rest of them do say undetermined because we don't know exactly what those cost estimates are. So as we're working through these or we get designs or we have studies, again, those things will be moved up to the actual C I P. But there are far more projects there than are listed here. Just these are the two that are included in the C I P for now. All right, um, same comment on the parks. So um, while we're only presenting one to you. Alright, um, same comments on the parks. So, um, while we're only presenting one to you in the C I P document itself. There is a laundry list of park improvements, and I think that your parks crew has done a really good job. Of coming up with all of the things that we would like to see added to our existing parks. Um, in the future. And again, some of those things where we may not know what that funding source is yet. Um, we know that if a funding source becomes available or if there were a referendum for. Um, a new structure, a facility, any of those things, we know that those would move up fairly quickly. We don't even have to wait until next year to do those things, but we would want to uh make sure that we prioritize where those dollars are placed. So the, the one that's included in the C I P is the City Park Playground Improvements. Um, this is. To um update the existing equipment that's in City Park and our estimated cost is two hundred and fifty thousand. And we're hoping to be able to do this in twenty twenty four. Financially, it does fit into the financial forecast for the Special Parks Fund. Um, which is fairly limited in dollars overall and fairly limited in the amount of revenue that comes into that fund annually. So we want to make sure that we are being very prudent with the dollars and knowing where, what's getting funded where. So before we bring it to.
If this couldn't be salvaged and put in another park where it's not like something in Hamlin Park or somewhere else, or is it?
I'm, I'm gonna say at this point though.
Okay.
Let's see. Uh, a lot of this equipment doesn't meet current safety standards. We're still legal with it because grandfathered it's put in before. But we, we, I don't think we would want to try to relocate it.
On that. Help me understand if I've got this wrong, but on the funding source summary, it's listed as a hundred and seventy five thousand. Will we be finding additional funding to reach that two fifty?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, it is actually the other amount of that is expected to be grants. So we could use. Um, there are some grants for playground equipment, and so that's listed in the detail page. So I'm, yes, I'm sorry, there's a, a variety of places. Okay, yes. Yeah, thank you for mentioning that.
And on that, is that just the old bridge one that we all ran across as a kid? Um, or is it both, full set and everything?
Well, we're talking about parks. I know we talked about a splash pad for several years. Is that in, anywhere in the mix or where are we at? When he's for the splash pad talk?
We are in that process and actually that is one of the reasons that this part went on there. We have been working on that process. We are waiting on some confirmation of possible donations to that process. And then making decisions as to other funds, but the splash pad, we'd have a contractor on board and we are ready to move on that.
Wouldn't be this year, I'm guessing next year.
It'll be this year. We'll, yeah, we hope to have it in by midsummer. Right, that's what we're shooting for.
That's exciting. It's not included in this.
Not, yeah.
It's not included in this because it's a current year. So this, we're only focused on next year and beyond for those five years. So yeah, that is something we should actually bring it back to you as a list of running projects and again, to help accompany this list. Um, the next listing for you is sidewalks and. You know, we've talked about using the sidewalk funds um that we have allocated through our special highway in order to make. Um, sidewalk improvements annually. These, a lot of these projects are in addition to and or we've tried to work into. Our um funding or. Available funding that we think might be there, but some of these do kind of slide outside of that. We're gonna have to find a way to make sure to get them done. But the importance is having them in there because of, of where they live or what they're for. So this very first one. Is the program that we talked about uh last year. We talked about doing an ongoing sidewalk replacement across town. In a variety of different places. And in addition to. We do have a sidewalk program to assist property owners as well. So we've lumped those all together with a hundred thousand dollars annually. And honestly, this could be less or more depending on what the uh available dollars allow in that fund. Um, and how much we're able to allocate from special highway to that fund as well.
Uh, yeah, that was my only reading through concern that. In twenty twenty eight, what you're gonna buy for a hundred thousand dollars will be eighty five percent probably to what we buy today. So my concern was not. Gradually increasing that amount to keep it at the same amount of linear fee essentially each year.
Well, as Molly said, it depends on our funding. I've been here for eight years. And our funding for the special highway has not really increased. Because it's funded out of gas taxes and and as well the uh federal funds exchange, federal funds exchange. Has increased slightly, but really the gas tax dollars has.
Yes, we only have one set of revenue for your streets and your sidewalks. So yeah, we do, yeah, we probably won't be able to do as much unless we have some sort of increase in our revenue overall. Um, this eleventh street sidewalk is a extension of sidewalk from eleventh and main to eleventh and Ash on one side. Um, we're. Proposing that design in twenty twenty three this year. And twenty twenty five would be the construction of that sidewalk. Can we talk about that?
Yeah, actually, this, this project and I think the next to um the doctor, city attorney. About the transportation alternatives grant and what would they try to do as well, these three projects together. And try to get them all knocked out at the same time. Um, that would be the eleven street sidewalk, the ninth, ninth street sidewalk. From, from Cherry to, to Mulberry and then South Prince. So we're getting a lot of them all together. The better the project for the transportation of her this uh. The better your chances are for getting it. So getting more of the grant. So we're, we're best, that's how we're looking.
Now, the proposal on Ninth Street, that, that's gonna be on the south side of Ninth. Is that what's supposed? It is that, I mean, necessarily, I know this is not ironclad stuff, information here, but I know there's been some. Uh, people would rather have that be on Tenth Street. Is there possibly that would change to Tenth Street instead of Ninth? It don't make much.
There's possibility that. To be honest with.
And that's because there is a sidewalk currently on Ninth Street, but it's on the north side of the street, isn't it right here? I'm just wondering if people using that sidewalk, if this apartment complex goes in, most likely that we use Tenth Street instead of Ninth. I don't know.
Well, I think we're going on Tenth Street at that end. At Mulberry.
Right.
So they cross, cross Mulberry into. Property with no. Real way to get it or want to go down to eleven.
Yeah, that's true. Um.
We can look at both.
Unless the university, we need somewhere, I don't know how they would do that, but.
Yeah, we, we can look at both and see.
And I might just mention that this is in addition to our project list based on those concerns that were heard from the public in the recent. Um, both public hearing and the, the resounding application that came to you as a city commission. So I think it's important to note that these projects are, you know, the. Our public is being heard and we're able to put together projects um to be able to accomplish some of those things. Um, as best we can, of course, as long as there's spending available.
So I'm glad that you brought that up. And I wonder if we're um on some of these, when we're further on down, we're talking about like waterline replacement and like. Widening of the roads, et cetera, et cetera. Within that, are we also including? Um, kind of, are we including, not a kind of, are we including sidewalk replacement there too? Within that project? I mean, if we're going to rip up the road, we're gonna widen the road. Okay. Yes, so just note that, I mean, just that it's not just about the widening the road or that. This or that of the road, it also would include a new sidewalk. Yes.
And, and on this, when you were talking about like the grant for like the safe place to school or whatever, I think it is that TA grant. That it's kind of scale.
There, there, there's two separate grants.
Okay.
Transportation alternatives. And then there's the safe routes.
Okay.
So, um. Everything, all, all of those that. Within the transportation alternatives, but only. The eleven, eleven street. So I, you know, I was. Yeah, it's got to manage all this. When you do it all in one, one grant, it's a lot easier.
Yeah.
A lot easier to manage.
How much does that grant cover? You know?
I, I believe it is ninety ten.
Ninety ten.
I, I believe, don't quote me on that.
I just did.
Um, I, I, I believe that's what.
I think the eleven street project is, is wonderful. I mean, if you ever turn down. Off of main and head to the schools, there's always this street. So I think that's a wonderful project right there for sure.
We, we do have. Do have some areas there that we're gonna have to acquire right away.
And it's being a public school like a, a university wouldn't qualify for that.
It has to be a like high school, middle school, grade school. Get the college, probably, probably driving most.
Yeah, but I'm wondering about even on this two blocks.
I'm like, you still might drive, so.
On that, uh, the safe routes to school, just, I mean, obviously maybe not even a part of this. Is it worth if we're gonna look at doing a grant? Finding all of our needs for every school we have, getting one large grant, because if we can match ninety ten. A million dollars of our money goes a lot further than a ninety ten match than. I mean, is that worth the conversation about trying to do a study and figure out what we need at around our schools to do one grant, maybe along with this? Or I don't know, is that a grant application? Is it easier to do ten grant applications over the next eight years or do one big one? I don't know on that. I've never done grant applications.
It's a competitive environment, so I think that they would smell it out. And then get.
A larger money, yeah.
Yeah, there's time to straight.
Except, yeah.
Well, the next couple of slides are just a summary. I'll, I'll come back to this one. This one is the Princeton Circle Sidewalk and this uh. Uh, map of where that would be located and the other being the Ninth Street, Cherry to Mulberry sidewalk against, again, we've. Just talked about that one. So unless you have other questions on that, I'll skip back to the. Um, other item for sidewalks, which is um the addition of ADA parking along Main Street. So currently there's a, uh, two existing ADA parking spots along Main Street. And we've just worked into our plan that we'd like to, you know, commit about ten thousand dollars per year. And that's the addition of one new stall per year.
Per side.
Per side. Okay, so two along Main Street annually.
Or two in the one hundred block on each side.
Yeah. So just the addition that um in a. Of ADA parking on Main Street. And those are all of our sidewalk projects that we had. Do you have any other questions on sidewalk? Alright, so the next one is our annual street paving um project. This is really in here because it is an annual project. It is something that we typically just place two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in here, but until they know exactly. Which projects they're going to do annually, we don't know what the exact amount is. Um, so we'll, we do update that um. In our, our fund um forecast for special streets as we go, also playing into. That um is the sidewalk needs and what we might reserve aside for those sidewalk projects. So um it is just in here as a place saver, just to make sure everybody knows that we do an annual um rehab project every year. Sorry, wrong direction. Uh, stormwater projects. Alright, so we've got two included, I'm sorry, three included in here. The first is Oak and Poplar Storm Sewer. What's up with this?
The storms are here uh between Oak and Poplar from. Fifth to Ninth. There's an old style pipe that didn't have other group joints. It's a flat base. Uh, we constantly have to go in there and make patch repairs. You can see that one needs to be repaired. Uh, it's, it's a joint that's separated a little bit. Um. The pipe itself, for the most part, is in, is in good shape, although it was. You know, as, as the community has grown and houses been added and everything else. This pipe has been in there long enough that, that it's no longer adequate with size either. So we'll kill two birds with one stone and get rid of bad joints and we increase our capacity.
Uh, one of the questions that we, or one of the items that we talked about is in the stormwater fund. While there is adequate cash to possibly pay for this project or another project in cash. Um, it doesn't leave you any available funds for the multitude of projects that need to be done for storm wire. So in our forecast, we have shown this one particular as long-term debt in order to free up some of those. Cash dollars to be able to get some of the other projects done. Um, did not unlike what we just did with Cedar Street. So we probably could have paid for Cedar Street with cash. It was originally a five hundred thousand dollar project. But when it jumped to eight, we knew we were eliminating a future project um for several years to be able to recoup that and get started on the project. So it's all about just trying to be strategic with the dollars that are available in that fund.
And this one as well, would that be replacement of the curb?
This, I mean, this goes down an alley.
Oh, down and out, alley, okay.
That's why it's between.
Okay. So it's not two streets that we're doing. It's just the alley between.
Yeah, so no, we would put her together.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Alright, this is scum ground improvements. We've talked about this. Um, actually, last year when we were talking about financing. Um, Cedar Street, we talked about the potential of using any leftover funds from that project to put towards this. We did not have leftover funds from that project. So this is a something that needs to be funded. An estimated cost of eight hundred and twenty five thousand in the year of twenty twenty four. You wanna talk about it at all? Do you have questions about this improvement at all?
If anybody saw the recent pictures from PD on Facebook, they would see how important that uh scum ground is for the water.
I mean, it's anticipated to be paid for rather.
Uh, this is the other project. So we do have two Cedar Street projects in our C I P, but this one in particular is more storms that were related. Stormwater related um than the other. So the other does live in. In streets. No, I'm sorry. I have this as two separate. I'm not sure why they came out as um two separate items in your report, so I apologize for that. But this one, yeah, this one does include the storm, the stormwater portion of. This Cedar Street between ninth to eleven.
Trying to capture the picture, how about a shape the, the M O S R from eleven to thirteen, there is no storm water from. From ninth to eleven, there is um. So it just all needs to be rebuilt.
So we streets project is the other portion of Cedar Street from eleventh to thirteen. This one is more. More largely street improvement as opposed to stormwater improvement. So this would be funded from your special streets um. Fund um or long-term debt supporting this project in order to get this project done in twenty twenty eight. So we're estimating that this out towards the end of your five-year plan here. Anything else on this one? Do you have questions on the section of Cedar Street improvement?
No.
These are your water projects um with five years' worth of water project projects. Oh, oh, I'm so sorry. It was. This is why I shouldn't run this. Um, so if you look at these, these are annual projects. And while we wouldn't normally put something in here that might look like a maintenance projects, these are our portions of our water. System that are important to the people in those areas, living in those areas and important parts of maintenance. And reconstruction of your water utility. So you do see a project annually over five years. Each of them are gonna be paid for in cash from your water utility fund. Do you want to talk about?
Well, and while we do a lot of repair, what we're talking about here is, is replacement. So it'd be two or three or four blocks of replacement rather than just going in and then dealing with the repairs that we do on an ongoing basis. And the only other thing I'd say about water is you'll see nothing in here about the water treatment plant. We are doing an evaluation. We are in the process of doing an evaluation on the water treatment plant this year. Doing some upgrades in conjunction with the new water tower proximity part. So we will be back to you with things that may or may not need to be done with the water treatment plant.
Even there was a lot of new homes in that development area. That must be really old water line, I'm guessing, going in.
Yeah, it's, you can see right there, it's forty plus. Okay, oh, I see, yeah.
Well, I can see this picket fence, but I.
I know, it's a terrible thought to look at this screen. Um, any other questions on these specifically? We can go to any one of them. We can provide more description on each one if you like. Hey, your wastewater projects. Uh, we have two projects in here for you. The first one being the West Side Sewer Interceptor. Um, this is a, a large project. We actually have two large projects. And we talked about which one belongs in the C I P and which one gets pushed out to your long-term projects. And so Dennis can talk a little bit about that, but there is actually more than one, a point five million dollar projects that needs to be done.
Uh, this is the west side. The reason we chose it is we feel like that this is where we are going to see probably the most group. Uh, the west side has the potential uh, to. To branch out to, you know, across Eisenhower Road. We're gonna see it happen eventually and they're gonna be asking for utilities and right now we can't support that. Uh, especially with the sewer. So that is what the West Side Interceptor Sewer is and we believe it is. More important of the two interceptor projects that we need to get done.
Would this also capture any building that would be south of nineteenth street?
Yes.
Okay, which.
Yes.
There's already been land.
It would all tie together. That's, we would build it in order to try to. Yeah, to support all of that, yes.
This would be long term finance, but be born from your um. Uh, wastewater utility. Second project is the W R F V F D upgrades.
Yeah, variable frequency drives are are a huge part of of our pump process at the wastewater plant uh. We put this in there, again, it maybe looks as like kind of a maintenance type of thing. Uh, but sometimes it's just good to recognize that these bigger projects like this are hugely important. We've gotta get them done. These VFDs have been in as long as the the pumps, they're past their their life. The, this is one of those projects where we can't piecemeal it. We've gotta replace these all at once and so that's the reason we started in.
Any questions on the wastewater projects? Alright, um, I wanna mention two things. Um, one, your department heads and all of their staff have a really good job of. Maybe doing a lot more of an in-depth analysis on these projects than they ever have in the past. Um, now that they haven't always done a great job of pulling them together, but. They really did go make sure that they fit. We sat down, we looked at all of the funds, we um. They went out and they got pictures for you or they created maps for you to make sure that you could see where these are because it's important for you to understand. Um, so I appreciate everybody's working on that and especially. Um, you know, your city manager trying to tie that all together and make sure that it was in a presentable format for you so that it's very informational for you and your decision making. Um, the uh, other part of our CIP um, process is. We do put out um, on our website, we did make notice on social media that we have a citizen request form. Um, on our website and we did get two citizen requests that that came into us um. Two uh, different requests. So the very first one um, is the proposal of a bike and pedestrian bridge. And there it was a fairly in-depth um. Analysis that was done by this individual and I appreciate that because I think oftentimes people just say, hey, could you go do this and they have no idea what it costs. Um, exactly what it might take to get that done, where you might be able to pay for that from. And this was a. A fairly good application for, or at least a request form that came in. And when we reviewed this uh, project. Remind me, I believe because we have one existing pedestrian bridge already, this would have been located to the east. I'm sorry. To the east of the existing.
The east of the voice water.
Okay.
And. Because there there's. That that's a that's that's a multi thirty dollar project to get something approved by the court. Because you're gonna either have the grill, you know, put pylons into the. Into the landing or just try to put some. We also don't want to put pylons in the river. Like we have on the current watch bridge. So we definitely wanna want to avoid that. So this, it's not a forgotten project, but I think it's out there.
All ones. And is it the white lines? Would it be, I mean, that would be rounds at that point or crosses the river or?
Actually, this right here was the proposal.
Okay.
And then but essentially bypass. Coming through town essentially.
So it comes north up to sixty eight. Where does it intersect sixty eight? I guess coming near that.
Where sixty eight highway.
And it's the yellow line.
Path on the ground there, kind of where our. Our new.
And that's probably something that would maybe potentially in time grant funds for. You know, parks and reg or something, maybe from the state with the bike trails in the next fifteen, twenty years, maybe.
Maybe this. Maybe, but this is a, like I said, this is a project that.
Yes.
We didn't feel comfortable trying to get it into the Bible.
And I think it's important just because um, it's important that our. That our residents continue to bring us projects like this and important for us to take a really good look at what that entails. And then also, as Director Ha- Director Haley said, it's not forgotten. It's something that we'll keep in the back of our minds as we keep working towards. Other projects. And if an opportunity presents itself, it's worth making sure we're taking a look at it. But right now, it didn't fit within what we were able to. To bring to you as a proposal.
On the sidewalks along sixty eight. Kind of helped with this as well to get traffic down to the rail trail bridge. Right as well. So there is a mode of transit now, but there wasn't two or three years.
Yes, and the other uh, the other request that came in was for a sidewalk repair at six oh seven North Cedar. We did. Um, that is actually that block is in one of our sidewalk. Um, it's in one of the sidewalks being done this year. Yes, so anyway, we appreciate the input from our residents. Um, so again, um, this. Program is there for you to look at the projects, ask us if we have questions along the way, but we will. Probably not as in-depth cover each one of the projects, but more talk about the funding as we work through each one of the. The budgeted funds um, coming to you in the next couple of weeks. And if you have any other questions for us, we can answer those now or we can address as we come back to you.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions for Director Landis or the other directors on the C I P? Commissioners, item six is a discussion allows chickens within multiple, I'm sorry, municipal corporate limits. Mister Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I wonder if uh, it, this is a Lincoln meeting for us and uh, we did receive. Tremendous amount of great data that Jennifer put together for us. So thank you so much for doing that. Um, however, I I personally have not had a chance to actually review and. Uh, review that data yet, um, since it came to us so late in the afternoon. Um, I'm wondering if. That might be something that we want to do at an another study session. Commissioners. Feel okay with moving this on to next Monday's study session, since we did gather this information, maybe get this information late in the day?
Yeah. You don't wanna have dinner with us?
Alright, that'll move us on to comments by our city manager.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, want to uh, point out that uh, the uh, fire department is conducting uh, joint operations with um. The Oberlin Park Fire Department out at the second street dam. And that'll be uh, May seventeenth, eighteenth and nineteenth. So Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Um, conducting uh, water rescue training. And then I believe you received some additional handouts for mental health month and the kids, the parks proclamations. And um, then of course what we address. This meeting uh, for items for the May seventeenth meeting as well as uh, the. Appointments of Zack going to the OMA board and a library more position to be later determined. And the uh, the good award for the lease purchase for Kansas State Bank at five percent. So that concludes my comments. No more questions.
Thank you. Comments by our city commissioners, Commissioner Graves?
Um, our city manager. Part of my thunder, I was nudged on the way out the door to remind everybody about or to tell everybody about the joint training. That is apparently very exciting on the river. So um, that is all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor.
None at this time.
Commissioner Clayton?
None at this time.
Just briefly, I know there's a disco tournament in town this last Saturday or Sunday. Yeah, anyway, just a great crowd. I saw uh, county vehicles from six oh seven different counties, a good crowd of people. I love seeing people come in and spend money. And so like it was a good turnout. So I'm just glad to see the parks were in great condition for that purpose too. Appreciate that. Might get the guy to have working on that, but yeah. Just wanna say it's great to have those tournaments and then one coming up in September.
Thank you. I have no comments. I will uh, make a motion that we move to uh. Recess into executive session for a period of thirty minutes for the purpose of returning client consultation. Justification for the closed session is to engage in confidential privileged communication with the board's attorney, our finance director, our city manager. Public Works Director and our Utilities Director. We will uh, give about five minutes for uh, us to use the restroom or to clear the room and then we will reconvene in the room. At six fifteen. So the second.
Do we, on that, want to, we need to move library board to next week since we.
We'll, we'll discuss that when we come out.
Okay.
Alright, all in favor, say aye. Alright, thank you.